For resurfacing Harvard, North Harvard Avenue up by North Elementary School. It's a road again instead of. And my car tires, thank you very much. The, in the sanitary bill, we had talked about putting do not flush, flushable. I never saw it on the bill. Was there a problem? Was there a reason it didn't get on there? Because we have a sewer opening on our property and when they go in there and power wash, the toilets erupt in the basement. So, yeah, not good. So, we really need to get that out to the public. Do not flush those flushable wipes. And I was in Elmhurst walking over by the train tracks. I don't know if anybody's seen this, on the sidewalk, there's like a big circle. And it says, walk your wheels. So, that covers bikes, scooters, any other devices that people are running people over with their wheels. You could call Elmhurst and say, where'd you get these things? It looks like a peel and stick thing, I'm not sure. But if you don't do that, you could also make a stencil and paint, you know, something along that line. Downtown, I'm talking, not, you know, where people's houses are. But, yeah, I saw that and I said, oh, I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I think that's it.
Not on the sidewalk or is it?
On the sidewalk, yeah. So, you're walking on it or riding your wheels on it. And it just said, walk your wheels, which covers everything. Oh, and I picked up this flyer at the Mac Center in Lombard about e-scooters and I'll give it to you guys. And some of the stuff that they printed out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Where are we with the e-scooter ordinance? Man, I've got eight-year-olds driving down the middle of the street, going 20 miles an hour almost on e-scooters. And, you know, my wife's gone out and told the kid, you really can't do this. But now he just rides by and furiously waves his hands.
So, Al, what I'd say about that is our ordinance has already been passed on e-scooters.
Kevin, can I interview you?
Our ordinance has already been passed on e-scooters and that is state law. So, if you witnessed this, call my mom. Unfortunately also, though too, we've got a lot of kids in town, a lot more than we do have police officers. So, it's extremely hard for our police officers to enforce this too. Now, our direction from the board to our officers has been to, you know, at your own discretion. So, a majority of the times, police officers are only going to be stopping when it becomes a major safety hazard or something has happened. We just don't have the resources or the police officers to police every single kid in town that has a scooter. So, this is part of why it's important and we've been trying to have this presence online and we've even posted advertisements in the paper, just putting this out there that, you know, we need the community's help to help police this as well. So, if there's an issue, call the board.
It's been discussed at schools too. Not that that's always like game one or out the other sometimes, but they have been talking.
No helmets, you know, to line up and not stop on the first stop sign, you know? He has a driver or he's got the crap out of you, you know? Who's gonna find their victim's suit?
That's right. And Kevin, you gave me a kill the day before yesterday. Cause he had a right.
Bill in Madison and at the stop sign and he went right through at like 20 miles an hour.
Yeah, they do that by the prairie path in Villa all the time.
So, yes, Kevin, you said you put it in the newspaper? What did you put in the newspaper? I don't remember seeing it.
Do you remember what you put there, the chief put that in? I think it was.
It was the X one or the review.
It was either the, it was either the Independent Review.
Yeah, yeah.
It's also been social media posts.
I think it was in the review. I could double check. And ma'am, that flyer that you had, we had posted that online as well because every town has that on the e-scooter thing. And just so we're clear, e-scooters are not allowed on the prairie path at all. We know this. Anything that's self-propelled is not allowed on the prairie path. For electric bikes, you got three different classes of electric bikes. Only class one and class two are allowed on the prairie path. And that is on their website, you know, on a DuPage website, it's clear as day, which states what is allowed on the path. The class three electric bikes are not allowed.
Are there signs at prairie path?
I don't think so. But it's, all they can do is post. I think it'd probably be a tremendous cost for them to, because as we know, the prairie path is quite long, to put that in every crossing would be quite cumbersome.
Also, Villa Park doesn't control the prairie path.
No.
Somebody else does.
There are signs at some crossings, they know, coming in from, to Villa Park and from Elmhurst, there's, there are signs like by the bridge that say that there shouldn't be any motorized vehicles. But there aren't very many people that are paying attention to that. You can become blind to those signs.
Can we be clear, electric scooters are not allowed on any roads or sidewalks in the state? Is that right?
No, it's 18 and older. So, we can still have those, but also the scooters can only, at least in Villa Park, can't afford your ordinance. I believe it's 35 miles. They can't go over 35 miles per hour.
I think we did it at 30 so we can keep the e-scooters by ordinance off of same terms.
So, where are electric scooters allowed within Villa Park?
So, electric scooters, if you're 18 or older and wearing a helmet, can be on roads that are under 30 miles per hour. But the kids that we're talking about, they're not allowed to do that. That is against the state law and our ordinance, so.
So, did you go to the schools about three months ago? You said you were gonna go to the schools and talk to the principals and try to get them to push this. Have you been to the schools?
I have not been to the schools, but our staff has been in contact with the schools to try to push this out, yes. And this is something that the schools have been addressing as well. I know, for example, Albright Middle School, they said, they put out announcements to their entire, to their entire students there, that even outside of hours, that you're not allowed to have, I don't know. Even outside of school hours, they're not allowed to have that on school grounds because it is against the ordinance and state law. So, they are putting that message out there as well.
So, you have to be 18 and wear a helmet to be legal in Villa Park on scooter?
In the state?
Yeah, many of us.
In the state, well, it's the same.
But the 30, the 30 is us, so I think the state is maybe 35 potentially.
Right.
But for us.
Many of us. Very quickly, Larry, we have an intergovernmental meeting on October 9th with all the municipalities, with the schools, the libraries, with the surrounding towns. And we will make sure we make mention of it again. But the schools have been notified and it's up to parents to also police their kids, which is very difficult in this day and age when they've bought themselves a very expensive device. They're not just going to lose money and give it away. That doesn't mean that we have to compromise our safety and our issues because of their lack of parenting. So, I agree with you.
What about the school resource officers? Has Villa Park encouraged them or charged them with writing those tickets and fines when those kids roll up to school? Cause I'm kinda done with the, we're just gonna tell you, I'm sorry, we need some actual action to start creating some change.
I think that brings up a good point, Jen. But what we have to do and what I wanna do now that you bring that point up is I wanna look at the intergovernmental agreement that we have with that because I know in the past with other school districts like District 45, there was a lot of issues about what we want those officers in those schools to be doing. Do we want them to be writing citations directly to students or what have you? So, I don't.
Yeah.
That was an 18-month process for us to get that intergovernmental agreement to get in District 45 with an SRL. If we start citing kids, they will kick us out, just so we're clear.
I, but I also just wanna be clear that it's lawful, that, I mean, it's just another one of those, you know, you say it's an ordinance, you say it's a rule. It's not a rule, it's just a suggestion. It's a suggestion. If you are not gonna enforce it and we are not gonna try to actually encourage people to adhere to this ordinance or this rule, then it's just a guideline and a suggestion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And that's the part as a teacher, like, listen, I need somebody else to just back me up. That when the parents aren't parenting and, you know, I'm sorry, you spent three grand on a device that your kid shouldn't be riding, that's not my problem.
And I completely understand, Jen, but to your point though too, it's not that we're not enforcing it. We are when we can and we have the opportunities. We just don't have the staffing to match all of the kids in town that have these scooters. We don't have the officer manpower for that.
Right, which is why I was hoping, like, when they're kind of rolling up in the morning and the officer sees it, I, I'm perfectly fine when they see that kid kinda rolling in, have that conversation. It's before school, they're supposed to be there. I'm hoping there isn't some critical emergency that's happening in our schools, that they could have that conversation with the kid and say, hey, you know what? I just wanna let you know, this is in violation of, you know, the state and Village of Villa Park. Listen, I, I'm gonna need to start issuing some citations if you continue to use this as your mode of transportation to school.
I think that's part of it. The little chalk and handbooks though are saying that they're not allowed to be on school property.
And so then we also have to, it's a rule, but it'll be.
But that has, that falls on the street.
Not allowed on the property either.
So, so, so not only is the village responsible for implying or enforcing these rules, but it's also state law that the school is responsible for it as well. So, these are conversations that can be had at the school board level as well to start having the school enforce this. Just like Albright Middle School, they will not allow any e-scooters on their property. Now, how they enforce it, I don't know. But I do know that we are getting calls to the police department whenever there's a complaint about e-scooters. So, going back to you, Al, is anytime that you see that, call the police and they will respond.
Do you have a flyer that I could pass on? So, violators are me, are homeschoolers.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to get some, some information. If I had a flyer, I'd go back at our door, send it to them, you know?
Al, the flyer is on our website, that's number one.
Okay.
Second thing is, it was already advertised and we had reports from the, from the, from the chief of police showing that he had done that.
This during the second week of September in the Villa Park review, it was part of the public campaign, but it's been all.
Yeah, and plus the social media. So, we have, you know, we're trying, we have done our, I will say that we are doing our best, that's what I can do. The second thing is, it starts from home. You know, when the kid are leaning their e-scooter, wherever they're going, I think the parents need to pay attention to that as well. I mean, I witnessed something yesterday. I wasn't meeting. You couldn't do anything, there were six, seven kids and they were double riding.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on top of that, they were, they were not on the main street, but they were going through people's lawns. Okay, so by the time you called the police, what happened? Police comes, those kids are there. So, what do you do with the dart? I couldn't do anything about it, I was visiting that house. But you could see the violation, you know, the violations are there. How much police can do? I think it's all, I know those kids were from the same block. I mean, what do you want me to do? Call the police and say, hey, by the way, your kids are out there doing this? I think it starts from home. So, same thing for residents of Villa Park, that they need to start policing from home first. And then we can move on and we can ask the police how to do their job. Everything starts from home, so.
And to bring you back off of that though too, I think with us having an ordinance in Villa Park that has fines associated with it, is that way, when a police officer is able to respond to a complaint and is able to issue a citation, it's a heavy citation for a parent. I know myself, you know, would think twice about having my son go back out on his scooter again after getting a citation like that. So, I think it's time, repetition and doing the best that we can to enforce it, but also with this, with the public outreach, the public education. But again, it's a slower process. One of the things that I'll say though too is we recently just went to the Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago. And even more recently, the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. And I will tell you that e-scooters across the entire state of Illinois is a huge issue and everybody is trying to figure it out. So, it's not that we're not trying to enforce it. It's not that we're trying to have an ordinance that is just to say we have an ordinance. There's actual logistics behind this that are hard to overcome. Things first and foremost are stepping.
Are the, are the e-fliers in all the display cases on the Great Western and on the prairie path?
I don't know that.
If we could, that way when people are walking, they could see it, take pictures or look that up, that might help with some of our community effort to enforce.
You may have taken, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, hi guys, I'm Lily. I made the flyers that you saw online for the e-scooters and e-bikes. I was gonna say, if you want me to print them out, I can put them in Village Hall and I can also pass them off. We have someone from the Recreation Department who goes out and puts the flyers up in those cases. I can pass them off to her as well and she can put them out.
Absolutely. And even at the rep center, you know, if we could out couple, maybe that people could grab, you know, if we happen to have a neighbor. But I also don't wanna be accused of trespassing on my neighbor's property if I'm gonna drop a flyer off. So, I don't know if there's a way to, because I know this is a thing in the Village of Villa Park, you know, you're just trying to be neighborly and it's like you touched my property. And we all have a lot, many people have room cameras and things like that. So, I don't know if the flyer is considered an illegal drop into the mailbox, you know, as we, and some people go.
You can't.
She's pretty malevolent.
So, maybe remind people, don't put it in the mailbox, but stick it on the door type of things, you know?
Superbillitude.
If I, if I made, add a QR code.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so this way, if someone sees it, they can go look at the ordinance, they can do look at whatever we.
Absolutely, yeah.
But in the cases.
Yes, so that should solve the, the main concern. Thank you.
Yeah.
I kinda think we hit the nail on the head a few minutes ago when she said something about the school resource officer. Now, this is Perez, if I'm not correct.
Just for the, just for the high school, yeah.
Yeah. The kids have social media and it's instantaneous. If he were to take two or three of these bikes, the kids would know the same day that Willbrook is now gonna confiscate your bike that's illegal on school property. Just two or three. And why, and then did you know the parents now, but the kids, they were going to a panic.
Well, and if they, I don't know, and maybe at the intergovernmental agreement, I guess I wanna know. First of all, you know, who's really gonna enforce it? Cause it kinda sounds like the school doesn't really wanna be the bad guy and the school resource officer doesn't wanna be the bad guy. Somehow, we've gotta do the one-two punch. But can we cut the locks off and take, if the e-scooters are on the property that haven't been registered to someone 18 or older who attends the school, you know, can we confiscate them? And again, I don't, I don't wanna have this turn into a completely adversarial, but listen, we all know, like, people continue to speed down and so we've come up with ways, speed bumps, those little flashing signs that like warned you, you know, you're going 42 and a 25, you know? Like, we've all kinda tried to do things to encourage people to be compliant. I'm, I'm just hoping that maybe we can help each other out. Because let me tell you, if we don't get this under control, like, mark my words, in about seven years, it's gonna be holy hell if that high school try to enforce anything.
Even at the middle school.
Given the flyer, flyer really says that what the safety concerns are and everything else and I know, but nobody's gonna really pay attention especially to kids. So, I think it goes back to the parents at the car.
I know.
We, we, we need to school at home first, so I, I would say.
But let me tell you, but we, remember, we, we all gotta just work with whoever
Agreed.
rolls into village property, just like we all did, educate whoever walks in our doors, you know?
Jen, you work at high, I work at the high school, what's the high school stance on this?
Yeah. Um, I know that it's not, you know, they're not supposed to be there. Have I been there after school hours and kids roll up on these e-scooters and comments are made like, how is that supposed to be, you know, a thing? But I'm also not at that time an official, not officially working at the time. And school resource officer, you know, it's six, seven o'clock at night. So, yeah, it's, it's a little uncomfortable. Cause let me tell you, as someone that, you know, happen, and you don't know, is the kid a resident? Is the kid a current high school student? Is the kid somebody's friend? You know what I mean? You just don't know. And so, as a regular citizen, sometimes it's a bit uncomfortable to approach because things escalate quickly. And if you're by yourself with a whole group of, whole squad of them and they all have their cameras and things like that.
Please, thanks for what you do.
Trying to, trying to. So, I, I'm hoping with this intergovernmental agreement, maybe there is an opportunity to just kind of figure out, cause I know I still have to talk to school staff about how do we wanna handle this? Cause I don't know how many teachers are really paying that close attention on our hierarchy of importance to things.
Well, again.
It's not the teacher's job.
Right, again, that's.
Everything's the teacher's job. Come on, we know how this is, you know?
We gotta do our.
Yeah.
People wanna be cops too.
But, but there could be like, you know, we have good turnouts for like, we still have Friday night football games, homecoming's over. But maybe again, there's some education campaign types of opportunities and some of our frequent, you know, offenders will start to kind of open up to the top and maybe that's when we have to kinda say, hey, we're at the point now where we're sending home a child. Now, we know you really well. We've talked to you at Willbrook Football Game, we've talked to you at Jefferson Middle School, we've talked to you on the prairie path, you know, I don't know. In, in the grand scheme of things, I'm sure the kids are like, seriously, aren't there more important issues? But until when someone gets hurt or they, there's a loss of life, then everyone's like, why didn't we take care of it before, you know, someone, you know, got hurt?
So, it feels school administration are helping that way too, but like, this is low on the totem pole because there are so many more safety concerns involved than.
Yes, at least they're getting to school and maybe on time now. So, yeah.
Hey, I have a, just a little suggestion. I, I know in Arlington Heights, there were two girls riding on a e-bike and a car with a 17-year-old hit them, killed them. We keep a running list of deaths or injuries of people, kids on these things. Maybe it's a scare tactic, you know, that they could present to the schools, okay, two kids here, one can hear, they're dead, people, they're dead. You know, a scare tactic, just maybe.
Elmhurst Hospital has a list type of injury that been taking place from these things. So, we, if you really want to look into that, I mean, you, you can find that information. So, again, do you wanna scare the neighbors, the residents? What's coming on? I think again, keep coming back, it starts from home.
Totally.
We can do everything else, sitting over here, pass the ordinance, do everything else we can discuss. But then again, they're your kids, you need to really pay attention. School can do so much, we can do only so much. Okay, so we, we have, we, we are trying, we have done our best from this level here. Again, goes back, starts from home.
We used to do that.
We did that.
Bronze and things, they would show you the cars.
Yes, yes.
I have two things. Jefferson Pool was turning 60 next year. And I know, I think you all had, as part of your campaigns, the new pool. So, I know it's been, you know, picked up, that it should last a lot longer, but is there any discussion about the new pool?
Yes.
And the other question is, I know it's a privately owned thing, but do you know anything about that thing at 27 West Park? Is that a whole area to go? It's like they've made a lot of progress.
I can speak about the pool. So, the new, a recreation commission has that. That's one of the first things that they have been talking about is a plan, a 10-year plan on how to fund a new pool. That's one of the first things that's on their agenda. They are right now looking at the history of what has been already discussed and how they're gonna come to the board and look to fund it. And they're, that's already on their plate, that is one of their hypotheses.
Okay, great.
There's a lot of resources too that we picked up from the IML conference that are brought back to help the system with the conversations. But I think, yeah, this is a priority. I mean, Jefferson Pool is on, it's, it's where Luftkin left off, you know? And I think some of the lessons learned from that is that, you know, there was a lack of preparation, of planning ahead. So, I think this is an important task that's assigned to this commission and that they're working on it. And I think the goal is to establish a 10-year plan because the liner that was just installed this fall only has a 10-year warranty. Again, I would hate to see the same thing happen to Jefferson as what happened to Long Island.
And I actually should correct that, they don't want a 10-year, they're actually looking more like a, they wanna do maybe just six to eight. They wanna be a little bit more aggressive.
And I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, the village trustees of the past, and I'm talking like 90s, 80s, 90s, you know, like, it was difficult for them to prioritize recreation. But I know President Voltes and even President Colleton was here and, you know, Cuzon and Hope and Patrick, you know, like, they've started to, and I remember Trustee Tucker with the cannabis, when we started opening, like, really trying to prioritize recreation. So, I just wanna say recently, you know, within less, you know, 10 to 15 years maybe, I'm hoping that's capturing everybody, I've been really proud of the village, really trying to help take care of recreational parks. Cause let me tell you, that staff, you know, somebody who worked at the pools back in the 80s and 90s, I mean, we were like doing everything we could to keep these facilities up and running and preserved and things like that. So, I appreciate the priority. Also, Murtha Pools, they helped to design FMC in Westmont. So, I had Daryl Thompson and Katie Wagner reached out to me about pool ideas and I was like, oh my goodness, I've only been doing this for the last however many years. Welcome, welcome to the conversation, you know? But Murtha Pools, FMC, I, that is probably the best pool I've ever swum at in my entire life. And I've been to a lot of facilities. I, in my recommendation to them, Downers Grove North, Downers Grove South, they have separate diving walls with competition areas, I like those. But Hinsdale South, you know, on a little bit smaller scale with just one body of water cause sometimes pool chemistry in two different bodies, that's a whole, that's double systems to manage. You know, that's a nice opportunity. I just said that if we're gonna redo it, it'd be really nice to have the diving separate from the swimming in some way. And then also have some other separate facility, like warm water for swimming lessons for people who wanna come and use it. So, that way while maybe competition swimming's going on, we have recreational users still have access. And, cause I think that's been the biggest head buddy, is our recreational water aerobic users compared to our more competitive swimmers. And if you can kind of separate those, you can have two, two things going on harmoniously at the same time. So, that would be very beneficial.
I would suggest to make a list of what you, you wish this.
I did, I did email it to Daryl Thompson and Katie Wagner.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I left off is Hinsdale South, I got them and they had a name and I haven't followed up with them yet. Cause Hinsdale South has a movable bulkhead, but they're able to keep the diving in one part of the pool and do the competition the other, so you don't have to reset in both. You know, of those two different activities can kind of be going on simultaneously. Again, it's a little smaller scaled than what Hinsdale Central just recently got. But I definitely do not use their architects, they did not know how to do pools. Do not hire anyone who does not have a long history of working with pools cause we will constantly be making repairs and regret it. We don't have the extra resources to pay for other people's mistakes, okay? So, yeah, Murtha Pools would be my first go-to. And that, I gave that information to Park and Recreation back when I was on it, after I left. So, again, there should be some flyers and things, I guess, some of this contact information, all that.
Anyone else?
I know, 27 West Park was another question that Mr. Stedman.
So, did the development, the Ramon Center, so this, this is a question.
I just want, I mean, I know it's not a village property, but I just, if anybody knows, are they close to being ready to go?
Are they passing their inspections?
I don't know. Mike, do you know, are they passing inspections? It looks like they're getting close to being, like.
Yeah, we have heard no negative reports, but I can double check on that and somehow broadcast it or get your information and see what I can find out and get back to you.
It's a, it's a very.
Just to be, just to be clear, they, they can take all the time they want and delay this as long as possible. That's my opinion.
Yeah, it's just a very open job site, so I'm just kinda surprised the, I mean, I know you're not supposed to be trespassing, but I would expect construction fence up till all the doors and openings are like sealed. And that's not something that they've done, especially once Sterling finished their project. They never made sure to bring in construction fencing to then kind of partition off the rest of their project. So, it's just been a very open, wanderable kind of environment, so.
Well, I'd also say though too, is that if you see something, somebody that doesn't look like they should be there, call the police.
I know.
Yeah.
Again, resources are, resources are limited. What I would hope that the village would just have told them, you needed after proper construction fencing up, yeah.
I, I think it's important not to worry about where our resources are going. If there's an emergency or a problem, call the police. Because they will always address it in one way or another. Because they will always address it in one way or another. But that's what's really important. If you see someone on a construction site that shouldn't be there or maybe entering a building that's not open yet, that is definitely worthy of calling the police.
Not only the, not only calling, just using, if you have any concern, you know, not only call the office of each one of us. Believe me, what I have seen and what we have done so far, within the last three, four months, many to be honest, thank you. I pick up the phone or I text message to the appropriate personnel. And believe me, we get, we are getting results within twenty-four hours or even less. Look around, what, what's happening in the train station, by the train station? How bad that situation was? We neglected that for so long. And we are.
But there's only so much we could as a village. So let's not throw staff under the, previous staff under the bus.
I'm not saying, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus.
You know, yeah.
What I'm saying is, that what we have done and the, the appropriate action that they're there, we are cleaning up. We are doing our job. I mean, staff, I mean, I would say, I personally mentioned the staff and I thank you for them, what they have done. I mean, it was not as, it could have been two-hour job, it turned out to be a ten-hour job. So that's what I'm getting at. We are doing, so pick up the phone, call nine-one-one. If it's not, call staff, one of us. We would be more than happy to look at the situation. And we have done that.
Speaking of buildings, where are we at the union?
I'm sorry, union's gonna be underway. We're starting to, Mike, do you want to?
What date are we talking now?
We are hoping that they're gonna break ground somewhere between November and January. So they're submitting documents for review. And we've been meeting with their representatives. So that, it's, it's moving forward. Everything in development is slow. There was a time where they didn't do anything because the tariffs created some complications and some pricing issues for them. So they, they had to sit on it, to kind of wait to see what would happen with the tariffs. Because that's a question, what happened? Why was there a delay? That was a delay, that from their standpoint. We have no control over that. So we have to wait for developers to move forward, and they are.
Okay, so we're talking November, January now?
Somewhere between November and January, they hope to break ground. Like I said, they're submitting plans and, and moving forward, submitting those to community development for planning review.
Okay, I also noticed there's a sign by the train station, comes soon, some type of building facility.
So, so again, what I'll say to that is that, uh, the village has not entered into any RDA agreements with Hawthorne. So in my opinion, that sign is premature. It is also a violation against our current codes. And code enforcement has been made aware of that and will be addressing that, uh, in their, how they do that. Hawthorne right now is a failed project, is stalled. From my knowledge is that Hawthorne has been submitting documents to try and enter into a new RDA. But staff is going over those documents to see if we're at the same point as we were years ago, entering into a first RDA, whether or not they can actually financially pull the project off. But also whether or not, um, their plans, uh, the submitted, that are submitted are what our staff needs to move forward with that project. But that sign that's up there right now is premature. Uh, it should not be up there. And the village has not entered into any new RDA agreements with Hawthorne.
That property is cursed. We'd get somebody to come and lift the curse. You know, that's what going on, I was just Joyce de Peja, bless the man.
I've got a witch doctor.
They can't even get them out there.
They're gonna get them out there.
We've got to get them out there.
Otherwise, wouldn't do it.
She's scared.
Why not, by the trade?
But I can bring them in. Maybe they can mow the grass over there, so.
Deserving grass.
But, um, what I, what I will say about the Hawthorne project is that the village board, and I think everybody for that matter, knows that this is a priority project for Villa Park. And our, our residents deserve much more than what is over there right now. We used to have businesses on there that were pretty, and even if it was a small amount of revenue. But now there's nothing, and it looks horrible. If you travel from the city down up to Aurora, and you come through Villa Park, you think, what is going on? It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to us, and that's why this is a priority of ours and that we are doing everything we can. And also our due diligence to make sure that the project that does come forward is completed. So.
Is it possible, you know, um, we have a lot of rentals kind of going up, and there aren't those opportunities for people to try and build equity with investing in real estate? Is that at a point, can a bunch of us residents, or maybe some other people, start crowdsourcing funds and say, change them from apartments, let's get them back to condos? And listen, I'll get a couple friends together and invest a couple thousand dollars, let's go. So we can actually get some owner, you know.
We've got a chance to have Trump Tower there.
So, so to that point though, because again, it is private property. There's only so much that the village has control over, and that's where the RDA, uh, becomes our bargaining chip or our means of, of getting something that we would like to see there. You, you could try to crowdsource or, or do whatever you can. But the developers themselves, right now in time, they are even telling us, all developers are saying that it's better for them to be producing apartments than it is for condos. And that's just the market right now. Will that change? I don't know. But that is what multiple developers are saying around.
The, the group that you approved at last board meeting, when is he gonna take in?
So if we have a meeting with him this coming week, um, to start our, our initial talks with him.
The initial talk?
Yeah.
Yes, we, we have a meeting with him this week.
And I think that meeting's more or less for him to get an idea of what our priorities are and where he should start his focus.
Well, not to interrupt, but he's also been given our comprehensive plan. He's also been given a list of properties to start keying in on. And it's still gonna take something more than that. It's gonna take creative ideas of mixing properties and mixing parcels, whether it's on St. Charles, on North Avenue. It's, it's gonna be taking some of him knocking on doors and trying to create opportunities that we didn't think were there. And that's something he's very good at. That's why we're really excited as a staff in bringing him in. We, we were gonna create a position for, for that, for economic development manager. We didn't like any of the resumes, and we received about twenty-five resumes. And none of them have anywhere near the experience, the skill set, or the networking that this gentleman possesses. So not even close.
I think it's important to note too, that the village has identified the need for development. And, and, and these are the steps that we've been taking to ensure that we're doing it right and that we're bringing in the right developments, that it fits our comprehensive plan. But I think, and I can't speak for the entire board, but I think we all understand that development is a necessity right now and that we need to do our best to make that come to fruition.
Mr. Kumar would like to say something.
Um, about the Hawthorne project, the Hawthorne project at present, if this builder is gonna go through with whatever, and we're still waiting that out, is going to be apartments. However, if that falls through for any reason, then it's up in the air what type of project that will be coming, right? It depends on the builder. So at that point, um, discussion of whether it is, um, a condo, a rental, or whatever that comes at that point. At this point, we, um, are still waiting out on the, the functionality of this RDA, whether it's gonna come through, is it gonna come through with financing and stuff as it is? Private property, so I wanna mention that quickly.
So to kind of piggyback off of what Trustee Kumar is saying here, is that with the development, regardless of who owns the property, they have to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the Village Villa Park. And as I stated earlier, that is kind of our mechanism and our tool to be able to have some sort of say-so, is more or less, we will approve this RDA for you to develop if these conditions are met. And some of those conditions, whether it's with Hawthorne or another developer, are what we are looking at as well. One of the most important things too, is maybe commercial real estate. If they are going to develop apartments or condos, we would like to see some of that commercial real estate reestablished there from what we've lost before. But that's where the RDA process is essential. And that is our tool as a board, and as I mean, it's a penalty, to tell whichever developer comes forward with plans to develop because this is what we'd like to see. We can absolutely ask a developer to, to do condos versus apartments. But again, that then comes down to whether or not they want to make that choice with their property.
Anyone else?
You need a new tip to grant that?
We still have, I believe it's six years left on that tip right now. So depending on what transpires coming up here, we might need to do something like that.
Would be more timely.
Possibly.
Be a lot more timely.
Six years just isn't enough.
No.
Especially if it's gonna take two, to develop. But those are things that we have discussed and that are potentially on the table.
I would like to say check something that's terribly earth-shaking and something we could even do at the next board meeting. You and I sort of talked about this. When someone comes up here and addresses the board, they're right up here and they have to go like this to the board. Those people back there can't hear what you're saying. What I would like to say, get rid of that. There is no reason why a person from the village, if you want to address the board, from here you can see the entire board, and these people can hear you. I know it's earth-shaking.
I'm on that, I'm on that.
Okay, I agree, I would like you guys to think about it because sometimes, a lot of times, people out here can't hear what the heck that person is saying. Sometimes even the trustees can't hear. But if you're facing them, and they're facing them, and we can get rid of this thing.
So what I'll say then, Mike, is let's give it a trial run from the next meeting, coming up till, let's say, uh, January. Let's remove the podium from the front and decide whether or not moving forward, that's the best.
And if there's a microphone here, which there usually is, somebody speaking, because that one doesn't always work there. But if there's a microphone here, everybody, I know.
So the next meeting, the, the next meeting will be here, but then we're gonna have our elevator service, which means this room is gonna be not used. So then for another six weeks, all of our public meetings are gonna be at the Villa Park Recreation Center. So we're making all those, those accommodations to have screens, to have microphones, to have chairs, to have postings. So we're going through that process, which is, uh, it's a lot, it's cumbersome. But it's something that need to be done. The elevator needs to be serviced yesterday, and we're doing that. So it'll be about six-week process to service it. We will advertise as much as we can, that all of our meetings will be moved to the VPRC.
So maybe I have shook the ground enough with this. You might want to even separate these chairs. I mean, you know, that's one of the things.
How about recliners? Go, go cry.
Yeah.
Go, go cry, that solves everything.
You can watch on YouTube.
Um, one, one thing that I do wanna comment on, and put on everybody's radar, is December twelfth, at the New Recreation Center, uh, from about six to eight PM right now, maybe a little bit later, is that we're gonna be hosting our first town hall to accommodate, um, the residents of Villa Park. What we're gonna be doing is utilizing the gym space in there, so that way we could have like an address of the state of Villa Park. Uh, there'll also be a portion of Q and A, um, from residents to, uh, to staff, to board members. We'll also have some guest speakers there. And then, uh, we're gonna be opening up the kitchen, uh, at the New Rec Center. And, uh, we're gonna end the, uh, the town hall by having a live band, um, to play some music down there. So we're hoping that it brings community together. Uh, all of our commissions will be present. They'll have their own table, uh, almost like a trade show. Right now, some of our commissions are working on some custom-made swag that they can pass out to residents that come and visit their tables and get people interested in, um, what they're doing as well. So I'd just like to put that on your radar, is that December twelfth, uh, right now, six to eight PM is our coming year first town hall. And moving forward, I'd like to try to do two of these a year. Our next one would most likely be in June or July.
It's a Friday, correct?
Uh, yes, it's a Friday, December twelfth, six to eight PM.
I wanted to thank our village manager for being here. Because I know it's, you know, it's coffee with the board, but Mike is obviously a valuable contribution to what's going on here. So thanks for being here today.
I'm just here to see you learn.
Anyone else?
Steve. I also wanna get on the, uh, thank you band wave for the village in terms of promoting the village and putting together events that are bringing people into the town. Like Brew Fest today has, has a growing history. The Fall Jubilee that's coming up, I think is gonna be a, a good day for the village. Hopefully brings in a lot of people. I mean, it's nice to be able to, to look around the other neighborhoods and the other municipalities and know that Villa Park is being turned into a destination site for events. I just wanna say thanks for pulling that together.
You're welcome. And this week's blurb that I wrote was about all the events that are coming up today. I'm sorry, I can't make the open mic today from one to four, because I'll be pouring beer. So I apologize.
So it's gonna have a mic.
Not running though.
Nope.
Not a superhero.
No, not a superhero.
One other thing I wanted to mention too, the VFW is, are bringing in the pumpkin patch that Community Congregational Church used to have running at their church. And it was taken over by Boy Scout Troop One-Ninety-Nine, and we did it at Fuel and Cramp. But after enthusiasm waned, it's been resuscitated by the VFW. And they're bringing in a truck, I think at one o'clock. I'm wrong, kind of time. It's between one and three sometime that, that truck is gonna come. But they're looking for volunteers. Yeah, today at the VFW, I suppose, to unload the truck. Same old story, you know, a, a twelve thousand pounds of pumpkins gotta get off that truck and put on the lawn. So if anybody knows anybody, they want to come out and help tote pumpkins.
I'm gonna be a drinking bear that might pour.
But I just wanted to throw that out there, they're looking for help, so.
Are there any other, uh, questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you for coming out today, we appreciate you.
I'd like to say that, uh, without prematurely speaking, there are things in the pipeline that are coming down, that are gonna be exciting for Villa Park, some certain projects. Probably working with, um, some other organizations and, um, things to make this happen. We'll have more news as it, uh, starts to come to fruition and comes out. But, um, we, we do have some exciting things coming your way that we'd love to share a little bit.
Hold it, it's not a cliffhanger.
Oh.
Cliffhanger's the best.
Don't say too much. That's how I get you to keep coming to talk to me. The next meeting, we don't.